Evening, it's time to get our council meeting started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the role?
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Mr. Foyce indicated he would not be here this evening, but could you all please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The place this evening will be led by Ward One Councilmember John Childs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Someone move to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the September 6th, 2022 regular session as proposed.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We have our proclamation time right now, and the first proclamation is Hunger Action Month. And I think we have Stephanie Graham in the audience?
Oh, Barb, okay.
We have the Barb Prather with us, so wow, what a treat. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Waterloo. In Iowa, over 229,000 people face hunger, and over 80,000 are children who do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas the City of Waterloo is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that those in the City of Waterloo need. And whereas the City of Waterloo is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Foundation Bank, a member of Feeding America, nationwide network of food banks, is educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more individuals in the Cedar Valley rely on food provided by the members of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank annually. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has had a devastating health and economic impacts across the country, and is projected that more people could face hunger in Waterloo in the wake of the pandemic this year. And whereas the members of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 6.63 million meals to Northeast Iowans in 2021 through its network of food pantry, soup kitchen, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month. And in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the fight to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations, to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Quentin Hart, do hereby recognize September 22 as Hunger Action Month. And we have Barb Prather here with us from the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. So Barb, please tell us about Hunger Action Month.
Thank you, Mayor Hart. Hunger Action Month is a time to raise awareness to the issue of hunger and that just simple tasks of everything from learning about hunger to volunteering, to raising money, to taking a tour of the food bank, just to raise your level of awareness to the issue of hunger. And we can't do this alone. The food bank is about community partnerships. And unfortunately for many, they don't know where their next meal is going to come from. And our role is to really heighten that awareness, bring about community partnerships to make a difference in the lives of the people we serve. And in recent months, since the disaster proclamation went away in the state of Iowa, the amount of number of people we're seeing is up about 15%, has been up about 15% every month, and it continues to rise. And so we just ask the community and the city to continue to support the food bank and realize that food insecurity is still an issue in our community, but there is a solution by getting involved. So on behalf of the food bank, thank you very much.
All right, and Barb, we want to thank you so much for making sure some of the things that we take for granted that we may have in our pantries and our refrigerators, making sure that we don't forget about the lease of these within our community. And what people don't realize, sometimes you could be a step or a decision away of being a person that needs some services. So I want to thank you so much for all the work you've done and your staff, and thank all the tremendous volunteers out through this entire Cedar Valley that are working hard to make sure that people have a meal to eat within our community. So God bless you and thank you.
Thank you.
Right, next we have Scott Wean. And Scott, are you, are you here? All right, so I will wait a second to, to read this one. Do we have, this is our Earth Science Week as well, and Sherman Lundey here. Sherman, why don't you come on up, sir? Welcome, welcome. You too. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas the earth sciences are fundamental to understanding our natural resources. And whereas the earth sciences provide insight into the processes which have and continue to shape the earth's resources. And whereas the earth sciences will help us to utilize and manage our earth resources. And whereas the earth sciences provide us with technology to better understand how to explore and wisely extract resources for our society. And whereas the earth sciences offer insight into a wide range of resources from in and on our earth to the atmosphere that surround us. And whereas the earth sciences open windows to better understand our resourceful earth. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim October 3rd to the 8th, 2022, as Earth Sciences Week. So Sherman, could you educate us a little bit more about Earth Sciences Week?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and the City Council, and all of the city staff members and all of the viewers. On behalf of those of us who work in the fields of the earth sciences, we appreciate this proclamation which sets aside the week of October 2nd, 2022, as Earth Science Week. In conjunction with this proclamation, you and the public are invited to celebrate the start of Earth Science Week by coming to Sunday at the Quarry on October 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for programs and activities by many agencies and groups at the BMC Aggregates Raymond Quarry, located just east of Raymond, Iowa, to learn more about this year's theme, Our Resourceful Earth. And with me tonight is a future earth scientist from UNI's Earth Science Department, Lindsay Hubbell, to give us insights regarding how the earth sciences help us to better understand our resources.
Hello, my name is Lindsay. I'm a senior at UNI. My major is environmental resource management. So the reason that I chose this major initially is because I was thinking about plastic. So I was in the shower, I was using my plastic shampoo bottle, my plastic conditioner. I was looking around me at all this plastic, and I was thinking to myself, why do we use so much plastic if we know how bad it is for the earth? Well, we use it because it's convenient, it's a social norm, and because at the time, we didn't know about its consequences when we started using it. But now we know about its consequences, and yet we continue to use it for its convenience and its economic value. So I started taking earth science classes at UNI, and I was thinking about the idea of earth's resources and how we manipulate them for our own gain. And of course, we have to manipulate them in order to prosper as a species. But we do so, so unsustainably that one day they're going to run out, and we're all going to suffer because of it. So I'm learning about natural resources such as carbon. Carbon belongs in the ground where it can help support life, but yet we put it up into the air where it harms us. For another example is Iowa's soil, which is obviously a huge resource where we live. But we don't always treat it well, and we lose topsoil every year because we till it up and we spray it with chemicals. And final example is pollinators, which literally enable the growth of our crops, but yet we continue to degrade and diminish their habitats and therefore reduce their populations. So all of this got me thinking about the fact that we can change. When I think about technological advances that we've made since the beginning of civilization, it's really amazing what humans are able to come up with. We have the brains and we have the resources to fix these problems, we just need the priorities. If we can educate more people about how dire it is to fix our resource problems, we can innovate and find smarter ways to manipulate the resources that we have. We invented plastic, and that was genius, but now we can invent the next thing which will be better than plastic. We invented pesticides. Now we can invent the next thing which will make soil healthier instead of breaking it down. I'm really passionate about my earth science education, and I'm very glad that I chose this major because I think we all need to start prioritizing these things. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you for all your efforts. Is there Andrea, Andrea Rodriguez here? Are you here? All right, and so just really quickly, the proclamation from the Water and Wastewater Workers Week, whereas our wealth and natural resources have been threatened by degradation of surface and groundwater. And whereas the water and wastewater workforce of the City of Waterloo have dedicated themselves to applying environmental passion and science to enhance the drinking and recreational waters of our great city. And whereas their applied environmentalism continues to be a vital element in improving the quality of life and preserving and protecting public health in our city and promoting sustainability in our way of living. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim September 21 through the 27th, 2022, as Water and Wastewater Workers Week. Second proclamation, the National Clean Energy Week, whereas across Waterloo, clean and readily abundant forms of energy, power, more homes and businesses than ever before. And whereas clean energy is a part of Iowa's energy workforce future, it includes generations from renewable sources such as wind, solar, hydro, and geothermal sources. But it also includes nuclear, natural gas, and carbon capture technologies, as well as energy storage. And whereas the clean energy sector is a growing part of our economy and has been a key driver of growth in Iowa in recent years, with over 28,000 Iowans currently employed in the clean energy sector. And whereas Iowa is the nation's largest fuel ethanol biodiesel producer, accounting for one-fourth of U.S. fuel ethanol production capacity and one-fifth of biodiesel manufacturing capacity. Whereas our country celebrates National Clean Energy Week, I encourage individuals and organizations in Iowa to support common sense solutions to address America's economic and energy needs in the 21st century. I also encourage Waterloo to capture, continue implementing the cleanest, lowest emitting energy technologies. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim September 26th through the 30th as National Clean Energy Week. All right, thank you. So that was it for proclamations this evening, and I believe we have some speakers that are registered. And the first speaker to speak on non-agenda related items will be Beverly Cosby to talk about Gates Park Swimming Pool.
My name is Beverly Cosby. I live at 315 Window Court, and today I stand before you as a private citizen and a member of the community for the east and north side of Waterloo. We know, I know, that you have put forth a rendition of an idea that you think would be better for or best for the east side of Waterloo. I'm here to tell you that's not true. There are people in the community that are totally and utterly upset because the information was not given to everybody that should have gotten it. Did you take it to the churches? Did you take it to the neighborhood associations? Did you give it to the people that needed to have the information? It must not have happened because too many people are coming to people like me and saying, I'm totally upset with the idea. I also know that when you get a, have an idea out there, you usually will get two or three renditions of what the, what you're trying to come up with. I feel that you took the first one that you thought the community would take and pushed it off on us. We're not to have that. We have a right to have what we need and want on the east slash north side. We've been shortchanged too many times. And we're at the point, I belong to, I mean, I'm with a group of people, of adults, that we are tired of that. I've been in this neighborhood all my life. Gates Park has always been in our, in our, in existence. Not only are we upset about the swimming pool, when you could have taken it and, and given us a pool instead of giving us a splash pad, but yet you take the pool, pool, and put it on the west side. We deserve the same kind of consideration. Our kids deserve that. We don't want to be buster shuttle to another side of town just to go swimming. We've always had a pool, and we should always have one. Also, you've taken the, the, the value of Gates Park and made it into, well, we can't even describe it other than a prison by putting that wall around there and, and the fence. All you need now is a guardhouse and the words prison, Gates Park Prison. We want what we deserve. And what we want is a pool that is up to quality, just like the ones you're going to put over on the west side. Now, I might be here by myself, but believe me, there are people out there, and we have another petition going. And just because this may, you may consider it a dead issue, no issue is ever dead. No, no issue is ever dead, and we have, we will reconstruct this so that we can get the satisfaction that we think we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Priscilla Cunningham to talk about legal evictions in Waterloo and Blackhawk County.
Everyone, my name is Priscilla Cunningham, and I was unlawfully and illegally evicted from my home, my apartment I had been living in for 11 years, simply because the landlord did not want to do repairs at the home. It went through magistrate court, district court, the Supreme Court would even look at it at that discretion. I paid my rent August the 5th, and I should not have been made to move or evicted until September the 5th. And I was evicted on August the 26th. These landlords do the things that they do. Tenants know their rights, we have rights, they have rights. But why should I be uprooted from my apartment after living there 11 years, even though another proprietor bought it? I complied with what Martin wanted me to do. I signed my lease, I got the utilities put in my name. It cost, it cost me more money to live there. I asked them to do repairs. They decided not to do repairs, and they terminated my lease. And they evicted me August the 26th. I'd been living there 11 years, paying $4.25 a month. With me putting the utilities in my name, the months that utilities had accrued, I was willing to pay those by the time I got in America to put the utilities in my name, which would have been costing me five or six hundred and some dollars a month to live there. So of course, I asked them to do the repairs. Instead of doing the repairs, they chose to have the sheriff to sit me out. I support the sheriff, I support the guys in blue, I support the veterans. I support a lot of places, a lot of things. I'm a community service worker, I help my neighborhood, I help the community, I do these things. I'm a God fearing woman, but I do feel like they were wrong for what they did. And now, when you go apply for an apartment, they want from $25 to $45 application fee. And if you don't get the apartment, you don't get your fee back. I feel like the city, the county, and the state are all condoning this behavior by these landlords, and it's not fair, it's not right. I've never missed paying my rent in 11 years. And because they didn't want to do the repairs that the city inspector told them to do, they decided to just evict me, and that's not right. I have a sheet of paper showing all of the rent I paid. I called him and told him I was willing to pay the back utility bills that had accrued to the time I got utilities put in my name, which was in May. Been paying utility bills since May, but they still have sheriff come out and sit me out. He's like, what, I support the sheriff? Someone needs to do something about these landlords in this unlawful, illegal eviction and termination of leases. I've been living in a women's shelter, and I know the other place had to help me, but that's not the point. Why should I be uprooted from my home? Because you don't want to do what you need to do as a landlord. It's not right. And I decided to come down here to speak about it today. And I want to thank you for coming out. What's your name?
Robert.
Robert. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for speaking to me too. But it's just not right for them to do this to people. Somebody got to care. The judge is sanctioning it, the court's sanctioning it. Supreme Court wouldn't even hear the case. Something, something has to be done. I know I have rights as a tenant, I know they have rights as landlords. But this month-to-month lease that they got going on, now they do that because at the whim of a head, they say, we're going to evict you, we're going to terminate your lease, and they can do it. No one in the city, the county, or the state is doing anything about it. It's not right. It's not right. And I'm a six to eight-year-old disabled individual. But it didn't stop me from paying my rent all the while, going through these court proceedings. They weren't supposed to be taking that because of the city ordinance. But they couldn't decide who was supposed to pass the abatement issue for them to stop taking my rent. I want to thank you all for hearing me and pray that you all do something about it.
Thank you. Next, we have Leon Begay to talk about tenants' rights.
Thank you, my name's Leon Begay, I live at 204 Baltimore Street. I just want to voice support and concern about Ms. Cunningham's wrongful eviction, sorry. And moreover, you know, I've met with a lot of you, and you know a lot about the details of this case. But you know, what we have here is a lot of different things, but mostly the big part of this is that, you know, there's, when we talk about bad landlords, we have a certain idea of who that is. And in this case, you know, we have someone who exhibited retaliation of their tenant for going to the city and actually advocating for the policy that a lot of housing advocates like myself and others had stood before you here a couple of months ago. When you all passed unanimously this new housing, tenants' rights policy, or sorry, the rental ordinance here in Waterloo. And we all understood that this is not the end, that we needed to keep working together. But the whole idea of this rent abatement also, it's shameful that I think it's been passed on to one another in the city, and we ourselves have been ready to educate and get the, the, the city to be more informed about this policy and how it can be used. Rent abatement is not something we want to use like to abuse. We understand that, you know, it, there has to be some, you know, litmus test of what that, what that is. But this, this, you know, this city needs to decide what that is because there's people like Ms. Cunningham who are being wrongfully evicted. And it's time that the city actually, you know, follows through with what we talked about when we talked about rent abatement, how, what that is. And so, you know, that we need action from the city, we need, we need some more, you know, advocacy from tenants in the city to sort of, to help inform this city about some of the issues that are faced by some of the tenants. There is a paternalistic, I'd say, attitude that comes from a lot of way the city handles things with people in the city. It's sort of, you know, we, there, there is a sense of like, you're trying to help, but also I think it comes off, it comes across like you all know what's better for everyone else, so. And I know that's not true, but I would like us just to enforce that that has been an issue here for a long time. Also, when we talk about some of the resources that are there for tenants, you know, we talk about housing, you know, sorry, the eviction clinic that they have for the eviction courts and everything. What we're talking, what I want to mostly focus on is before it even gets to that point. So there's other factors that may lead to eviction. And there are housing advocates and tenants' rights advocates are working together to get ahead of this. So I just would like to ask that any other future task force regarding this issue could have tenants at the table, have housing rights advocates at the table. But I just want to also thank, you know, Councilman Neil Wilder, Mayor Hart, and Martin Peterson, the city attorney, for also hearing us out about this case. But also, you know, we would like to ask more for the city to help us, help you, so that way we can become a better, more equitable, and fair city for people. This is a great place to live, and we don't want to move, but we need to make sure that people here are living with dignity, and people are living here with the idea that their, their city's taking care of them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that was the last of our registered speakers. For those that would like to address the City Council on non-agenda related items, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. Excuse me. First, I'd like to have number two and three. three from the pre-authorizations removed for further discussion. And then I'll go back to the pre-authorizations for spending over a certain amount of money. I guess I'm, I'm at a dilemma as to whether I, if I were a city employee, whether I'd want to work in this building, if we have to have a bullet, bulletproof, semi-bulletproof door on any door in this building. Have there been a lot of problems in this building with someone bringing in a weapon and starting to shoot the building up? It just seems like it's, do, do we want to have a reputation like that, that we advertise that we had to put bulletproof stuff in our, in our city hall? It just, and I, I, I want to know, is it really needed?
Yes.
There's been incidences here?
Yes, it's needed. You asked the question, it's needed. People's safety and health and concern. And if you walk one day in the life of a city employee, and it doesn't make a difference if you're in Waterloo, if you're wherever, people's safety, that's important. So you asked the question, the answer is yes, it's needed.
Okay. So there's been no incidents?
Right. Is there anyone else that has some comments going a second time?
Good evening. My name is Belinda Creighton Smith. I reside at 416 Oliver Street here in Waterloo. I stand before you as well, expressing my concern about the proposal to remove the pool at Gates Park. I'm happy about the idea of restoring that area and doing something because I'm one who said that since urban renewal, the things that were taken from us have never been returned. And so I propose that we not only have a pool at Gates Park, but we have other stuff too, that you expand the area. And you do have the walking trails and the playground. All of those things are wonderful. But it really does not set a good, not only example, but image for the community if there's only one pool and that pool is Burns Park. So I'm asking that you reconsider it. I appreciate the mayor taking the time to talk with us and explain to us the process. I also expressed to the mayor that if I knew someone was going to represent me, I would have let them know that I did not want that to happen. And so I think it needs to be reconsidered seriously because the community is very disappointed with it. And I didn't receive anything at the church. No one knew about it. And as I even interfaced with people today at the hospital, no one knew. And so we just have to do a better job of communicating with our public, especially the people that we serve or we vow to serve. So I really appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council with regards to non-agenda related items going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So a couple of things. It's clear that more work needs to be done on housing and I hope that we can continue to have those conversations. I am pleased that the Waterloo State Neighborhoods Commission will be starting to meet next Tuesday. This is a commission that we had voted as a council unanimously in June to get started on the work of addressing gun violence in our community. This commission will continue to have the public meetings. It will continue to seek input because this is absolutely an issue that is impacting us. It impacts everyone in Waterloo. So I'm excited for that first meeting. It will be on Zoom next Tuesday, but I'm very much hoping that we can move to a more physical setting so that folks can come in and interact. In addition, just in the name of transparency, I will be having a constituent forum this Thursday, September 22nd at 5:30 to 6:30 at the library. They are graciously allowing us to be hosted there. I do not have a guest speaker, so you will just have me this week. But we, I, it's open to anyone, Ward 2 constituents or constituents from around the city. I would be very interested to hear more from, from those folks tonight or other nights who have brought forward concerns because some of these issues I need to be better informed about and I need to learn. So it's this Thursday, 5:30 to 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just had a, I think it's an easy request, and it has to do with development agreements and everything that, that comes before the council when there's signatures required. I would really like to have their name printed underneath the signature. I know when you sign it and Kelly signs it, your names are underneath it. But when we go to these development agreements and all I see is this, I have no idea who signed it. I don't know, you know, a year or two from now, if we would have any idea who signed it. Would that be possible for that, in the future, that when these agreements come before council, that when they're signed by the developer or whatever agreements, you know, the city enters into, that we actually either have them print their name or type their name underneath it?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so as you all, excuse me, as you all know, we usually have our Ward 3 meetings at the last Sunday of each month. So for this month of September, on September 25th, we're going to have our community meeting at the public library and meeting A and B, and that'll be from 4 to 5. So I do prefer that you live in Ward 3 if you come, because I want to make sure that I'm focused on the individuals that I serve. However, if you want to come to this meeting and you do not live in Ward 3, that's completely fine. So I hope to see you there.
Right. And then lastly, September 28th through the 30th is the Iowa League of Cities meeting. So we'll have guests from throughout the state of Iowa. We are in need for about six volunteers to fill some slots to help be ambassadors. If you're not familiar with the conference, every municipal worker, from clerks to finance people, to police, to anybody that works within the city, also elected officials from the state of Iowa. I think we are set at over 500-plus people that's going to be coming to our local area. So it's a great opportunity for us to be able to showcase some of the amazing things that we have downtown. This will have an incredible impact, not just now, but on the future, about attracting people to the city. And so we need, we have about six slots that we still have left to be filled, to be ambassadors. Sometimes you see ambassadors in major cities where you have people that are out in the street. They may have a particular shirt on, but they help give some direction. And maybe this is something that we can start to do, to be more of a hospitable community to people that come from outside. Number two, on the 24th this Saturday, we are looking to find some volunteers for a downtown cleanup, to make sure that we are able to go into areas. As you know, we've done spring cleanups before where we have different people that are volunteering and go into different wards to help clean up the local area. So we are looking for volunteers for that also. So please take a look at the Main Street Waterloo website for ambassador and for downtown cleanup. We really need your help over the next week and a half as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public comment's closed. Someone want to do the consent agenda? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda along with the bills payments for September 12th, 2022, and that amount is $2,789,695.35. And for September 19th, 2022, that amount is $3,693, or $3,693,848.93. $3,693,848.93.
Can I get the second?
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Dreyer, are you referring to the pre-ots that were on the finance committee meeting? Is that where?
It's what he's referring to.
So those are already, is that even relevant right now? If you want to have a conversation, who's the finance chair?
I was, Mayor.
Do you want to have a little conversation with Mr. Dreyer after the meeting about this potential questions? So you, you have questions about applying for a grant? So, so someone, so it's already removed, so we're good?
Yeah.
All right. So all the other items except two grant applications for making safer streets. All right, counsel, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foote? So, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I read them together or separately?
Please.
Okay. I'd like to adopt a resolution approving submission of a grant application for Iowa Clean Air attainment grant in the amount of $910,000 to install traffic adaptive signal control systems on Annesboro Avenue from Fitzway Drive to Downing Avenue and committing to maintaining the improvements for the life of the project. And number three is a resolution approving submission of a grant application for the Iowa Clean Air attainment grant in the amount of $1,100,000 to install a traffic adaptive signal control system on Broadway Street from Franklin Mall intersection to the highway, to highway 218 ramps at the Airport Boulevard and committing to maintaining the improvements for the life of the project.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Mr. Dreyer?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Let me make it clear, I'm not opposed to getting grants.
What's the question?
I just don't see the tie between clean air and traffic signals. I don't know how traffic signals make clean air. And if you go to number four, there is another resolution approving acceptance of a highway grant.
We're talking about two and three, two and three right now.
For traffic safety.
Two and three right now.
This is not traffic safety.
Okay, every time a car, every time a car goes up to a stoplight, there's a thing that's called an exhaust that's in the back of that car. And the longer delays that you have for cars to sit in a geographic area, the more contamination, potential pollution you have. Smart adaptive signals will give us the ability to have free flowing traffic that's able to go through into the community. And another thing that it made, you know, we can't necessarily dictate what Iowa Clean Air attainment does, but if there is an area where this may fit, we're definitely going to take a look at it. But this is about, sir?
You made the point.
All right.
Perfectly. Thank you. I just needed to get it in my simple head. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, for number two and three, roll call vote.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Right, thank you. We have two appointments on. We have Jessica Rucker to the Community Development Board. Jessica was here earlier. And we have Mary Ann Curtinback to the Civil Service Commission as well. And below we have, I'm trying, it's trying me today, Kelsey Gifford to the position of, Kelsey Gifford, Angela Chambers, and Cassandra Anderson. The first two are for clerks in the Police Department. And Cassandra Anderson is for clerk two in the Police Department. So we just want to tell from our volunteers to our new employees, thank you so much for choosing the City of Waterloo for your employment and for your volunteerism. Thank you so much. Could someone? Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication in a public hearing. And that is for a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone approximately five acres located east of 2135 Commercial Street from A1 Agricultural District and M1 Light Industrial District to M1 Light Industrial District.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone approximately five acres located east of 2135 Commercial Street from A1 Agricultural District and M1 Light Industrial District to M1 Light Industrial District.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, do you have questions about this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk? Yes, sir.
Is this time sensitive? I mean, that's usually the reason we suspend the rules.
Or if, I mean, has there been any objection to anything?
This is Schrader with staff. It is not time sensitive, but there has been no objection and this is really more about cleanup matter. It's an area that's zoned A1 agricultural, but it's historically been used as industrial. So we're just kind of trying to clean it up. But there is nothing really time sensitive.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bozen. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take three, four, and five, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a resolution approving the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Recommendation of Mini Grants to Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference in the amount of $3,000 and Midwest Triple Pattern Challenge in the amount of $3,000. Number four, a resolution approving a project design agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. in an amount not to exceed $249,300 for design services in conjunction with the Airport Terminal Parking Lot Canopy Structure Project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number five, a resolution approving a professional services agreement in the amount of $24,000 with WHKS and Company to develop two Iowa Clean Air attainment grant applications, one for the Annesboro Avenue Traffic Adaptive System and another for the Broadway Street Traffic Adaptive System and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that have questions about this particular item? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Could we, I see Mr. Hall is here. Could he kind of give us an overview as far as what's going on there? Mr. Hall?
Davis Hall, experience Waterloo, 500 Jefferson Street. So we've got two grants here. One is a bowling tournament towards the end of the month. The other is the Iowa League of Cities, as the mayor already alluded to. Both of these grants are pretty strong in terms of economic impact. Hotel nights in this time of year are helpful, frankly, outside of summer months. These are really good times. So the League of Cities is a, is a great opportunity for us to showcase the entire city. So typically, that would actually be a higher grant, but the mini grant is capped at three and they weren't requesting additional dollars, so.
All right. And then, Mr. Hall, with regards to the, the, is that bowling tournament?
Yep.
Is, how is Waterloo with regards to just overall bowling? Whether is it, we do the state tournaments?
We've got a couple of state tournaments, high school tournaments, got some seniors tournaments. We have, we host a couple of collegiate tournaments between Hawkeye and Warburg. So because we've got two facilities with the same ownership, it makes things a lot easier for some of those tournaments, especially the larger ones, to be able to use multiple facilities to facilitate all the players.
Have we ever had this one?
No.
Okay, so that's, all right.
We still have a chance.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take six, seven, and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number six is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Metaware Solutions, Inc., Anthem, Inc. for a community paramedicine program and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a development agreement with Three Stooges LLC for the construction of a new 49,920 square foot industrial building located at 520 West Parker Street with a development agreement in the amount of $59,887 with a minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $2,456,910 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And eight is a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Metro Fiber Net LLC of Evansville, Indiana, to allow you- to allow use of city right-of-way for a communication system and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, uh, it says, any, any questions about these items? Um, could I have, uh, Chief Treelor speak to number six? Kind of a, a big deal for the community, uh, so if you can bring some attention to that.
Sure, Pat Treelor, Fire Chief. Uh, so, the agenda item is to, um, enter into agreement with Medaware, which is a, a middle company between Anthem or Mara Group. And Mara Group within the state of Iowa is a large MCO, so managed care organization. So they approached us and a few other Medicaid users within the state and approached us to offer a community paramedicine program within the community. So we've tried, uh, to get this going on our own for probably about the last five years. So if you were to approve this tonight, we'll be the first fire-based EMS provider in the state to enter into this type of agreement. And what it does is it allows us to go into the homes of Medicaid patients that have been identified through Medaware and Anthem, which is a Mara Group. They identify them as high users in the system. And there's a number of different reasons why these people are high users. And maybe they're not familiar with their medication. They don't have the proper resources to get their medications, those types of things. So it gives us an opportunity to provide a better service. It's not going to be a big money generation for us, a generator. We are going to get a small stipend, go into these homes. And, uh, we think it's just going to be a real positive thing. It's going to be a start of something big, we believe. There's one other, uh, group that's doing it in the state, and it's a hospital, uh, hospital-based EMS in, in the Des Moines area. So we've had some initial, uh, trainings with them. We understand we don't have, uh, executed contract yet. There is, uh, a little problem on their end getting it back to us. Uh, but we feel we're on solid ground. It'd be really good for the community, and I think, uh, good for our guys and women that have signed up to do it as well.
Alright.
Yes, sir. I had a couple, and I, I really like this program. I, I went through the entire contract. Are we gonna end up having to, uh, bring on additional staff to create, to, to, uh, work this program?
No.
Okay, then the reason I ask, sir, is, is that there's a lot of, of, uh, uh... You, you're gonna have your initial visit, which is supposed to be an hour, and then there's a lot of charting, a lot of information that has to be uploaded and sent back to the, the, the Medaware, correct?
Correct. So we're gonna, we're, we're aware of their system. We're gonna use their proprietary app?
Okay.
Their application. It's, uh, uh, very user-friendly. Uh, we've trained on it already. Uh, we're confident that, uh, it's real user-friendly for our, uh, eight or nine paramedics that have volunteered to take this training. So it's a specific four-to-hour class that's offered to us free of charge, including the books. Uh, so, we, we don't think it's going to be a big time. A lot of times not going to be needed after the patient visit, put it that way.
But, but to be on this program, you, you have monthly visits, correct?
Right. So we, we believe that there could be as high as three hundred patients in and around our community. We're gonna start small. We're gonna start with ten.
Okay.
And these patients have been contacted by Anthem at a minimum of three times before we contact to set up the initial visit.
And, and, and that's why I ask about the additional staffing, because once Medaware gives you a patient, you have twenty-four hours to schedule.
We have five days, per the contract.
You gotta make contact within twenty-four hours, but then you have five days per the contract to get out to them.
Correct.
And to, and to do the assessment. And I was just curious on, that we have, are you, are these six, six to nine paramedics? Or do you just, are you gonna just designate someone in your, in, in your staff or office to do the scheduling?
So we're gonna identify our medical supervisor and his admin to be in charge of those, uh, those two areas. The, um, administrative assistant on the EMS side, uh, was at the initial training.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Exciting.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick. So I know that we're not going to get, uh, a huge money-making out of this, which is perfectly fine. It's people's healthcare. But the, the other goal will save us money, which is that these folks who are going and utilizing our EMS services a lot, we're hopefully seeing them less because they're getting the healthcare that they need, which helps save us money on runs and staffing in the long run as well, right, chief?
Correct. So our system right now, we're going down a path of it not being sustainable anymore. And it's not just on our end, on the EMS, uh, transport provider, but it's our hospitals, our ERs. So we feel that this is just the start of something really big. We're gonna be the first fire ba-, if you approve it, we'll be the first fire-based EMS provider in the state. Uh, the company Medaware is in other, in, is in other states. Uh, we think that, uh, AmeriGroup has stepped up to the plate to try to, um, reduce the usage. Now, they're probably getting incentives from the federal government for that, but that's fine. We do think in the end it'll, it'll help with patient, uh, patient care and the lives of the patients that we serve. Perfect. Yeah.
Alright. Yes, sir.
I just, uh, I just want to thank you guys for going down this route, um, because I know in the healthcare space, prevention is really important, and hospital visits and hospital readmissions are really important, really expensive, rather. Um, so the more we can do to prevent those by doing these things on the front end, um, I think that's all for the better.
That's great. I appreciate that. One last thing, some of our concerns going into it was we didn't want to compete with existing services, whether it be, uh, home healthcare or different types of other organizations. So we did our due diligence on that, and we're confident that we're not stepping on anybody's toes. We're not stealing revenue from another organization. Uh, we think that we're just gonna kind of fill a little bit of a void there.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, definitely, uh, another tool in the toolbox to be able to get out and form relationships with, with people and to reduce the amount of costs. So we want to thank you guys for thinking outside of the box, uh, to make sure we provide good customer care uh, to all of our citizens as well, so, thank you, sir. Any more questions for chief? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, any, uh, other questions about six, seven, and eight? Madam clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, could, uh, someone take, uh, nine and ten, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, you can arm wrestle over it.
You'd win.
I mean, you really can.
It looks like he gave in, so.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving amendment number one to a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, originally executed December twentieth, twenty-twenty-one for design services for the use of CARESAC grant funds received by the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration for projects at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Magellan Advisors in the amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for preparation and supplemental of a grant application to the Department of Commerce, NTIA Middle Mile Grant Program, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would, uh, has questions about nine and ten? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
On ten, how much are we, are, are we applying for on this grant?
About fourteen million.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions? Madam clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Childs?
I move to adopt a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation one-point-five-zero-dash-two to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid by, paid in connection with specified projects. Number twelve, a resolution approving issuance of one credit card to the Fire Department, Sewer Department, and Public Works Department, five credit cards to the Police Department, and setting a spending limit of five thousand dollars per card. Number thirteen, a resolution repealing and revoking award of bid to Clean and Infusion LLC, King of Prussia, P.A., in the amount of five hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars and the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with fiscal year twenty-twenty-three wastewater treatment plant final clarifier number three, rehabilitation project contract number ten-sixty-seven, and rescinding resolution number twenty-twenty-two-dash-five-three-five.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, is there any questions on eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. This is on number eleven. Um, it says to issue debt. Does that mean another bond, first off? And how is it going to be paid back if it is another bond? Um, our sewer and water and everything keeps going up by, by fee, and our taxes went up again this year. It just, uh, we keep piling on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that you, Kelly?
I can try to answer it. Um, so the resolution has been provided to us by our bonding attorneys that, um, assist us with the SRF loans that we recently adopted, and the cost will be for the sewer clarifier project. So it's just a step in the process.
And the SRF is a state revolving fund?
Correct.
That we've used several times already. Anyone else have any, uh, other information on this?
I have a question on twelve.
Alright, uh, Mr. Bozen?
Thank you. I, uh, I, I see the need for the Fire Department, Sewer Department, the Police Department, and Public Works. The Police Department already has five credit cards. My issue is the, the spending limit. It's five, five thousand dollars is twenty-five hundred dollars over our preauthorization limit. And that's, I, I wouldn't have a problem at twenty-five hundred. My issue is the five thousand.
Alright. Uh, does anyone know why the limit was five thousand, or, uh...
It hasn't been before.
Sir?
Joe Leibl, Police Department, I can just speak to our side of it. Because of the twenty-five hundred dollar limit and the speed at which the bill gets paid, they're frequently capped out. It's not that you're spending five thousand at once. I mean, we had a three thousand dollar travel request on this last one, which we'd have had to split over two cards. It's just the cost and the speed of the turnaround of the bills is what gets hung up. We're frequently searching for a card with room, if that makes sense.
I hope they all get to speak.
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. Um, for Public Works, it's just because of the volume for the parts. So it just makes it a lot easier, you know, with the five thousand. Even though, um, we won't be going over the twenty-five hundred limit, it's just more of just getting a card from some, some of the vendors that we have to use a credit card for. That make sense? You look confused.
No, I don't, I'm not confused.
I was looking for Treelor.
He, he left.
Oh, he took off before that question time. So, anyone else? Are you good? You want to make a amendment, or?
No, I'm fine.
Alright, um, madam clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, could someone take, uh, fourteen, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh.
I mean, did you want me to say, uh, the, the honorable? Mr. Childs?
I'm still high on the coffee. You gotta calm down with that. Mr. Mayor? Coffee. I had a lot of coffee today. Um, I move to have an ordinance amending Title One Administration. Uh, so, motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an amendment to the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Title One Administration, Chapter number four, Mayor and City Council, and enacting in lieu therefore a new Title Number One Administration, Chapter number four, Mayor and City Council.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Anyone with questions?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Um, I guess I don't agree with part of your changes. Um, but one of the ones is what I just did a while ago on the consent agenda is to ask for something to be removed, which we now cannot do according to this ordinance. And, uh, it, it just, uh, I, I can get ahold of a council member, or I can try to get ahold of them. And most of the time, I never get an answer timely that they got my message. So how do I know it's going to be brought up by them? Where if it remains the way it is, where I can ask for it to be removed? Um, I also see on there, it's on number, uh, one-dash-four-A-dash-sixteen, number eight, uh, consent agenda. Uh, don't see that this, uh, we get it after business hours on Friday. Council meeting's on Monday night. Uh, again, backed up to the fact that I can't get these guys to answer me back. So do I have enough time to get ahold of my councilperson? I don't know how much, and I should have worked seven days a week on the council business, but at the same time, it just, it, it backs me up, not being able to get any answers. And one-dash-four-D-dash-five, uh, censor, there's a censor form on there for previous council members. But there's no teeth. What can you do to them? What are you gonna do to them? On a council person's at seat, uh, you can zip their lips. But if they're a previous council member with no, uh, teeth in it, what's the reason for it even being there? Thank you.
Mr. Dreyer, can I ask you a question? Um, with regards to, uh, you reaching out to council members, kind of want to, what approach have you taken to contact folks? Just out of curiosity?
Uh, well, I sent you an email this afternoon because I finally got to my computer. Um, about, and, Mr. Childs? Um, last meeting said something about a two-way. But what's a two-way? So that email was about, and I copied you, to have you folks give us more information. When you bring up a subject, you all know about it because you have your packet. So that email was about, and I copied you, to have you folks give us more information. When you bring up a subject, you all know about it because you have your packet. We don't know about it, so it would have been a nice explanation as to what was the two-way that he was talking about.
Okay.
Okay, and Mr. Childs' email keeps getting rejected at my computer, so I've got to go in and figure out why it's getting rejected.
So after the meeting, if you two want to make sure he has the right email address, that'll be great. Appreciate it. So thank you, Mr. Dryer.
There's been a lot of emails I've sent to previous councils, et cetera. I never get an answer back as to whether they got it, whether they understood what I said. No communication back and forth. And again, us being able to get it only on Friday after business hours does not make it congenial for us to be able to communicate with you timely.
It's available on Wednesday, which is a little bit quicker. So, so I guess, I was just trying to see the approach, if there's been a breakdown in communication or why council or council members historically have not reached out to you as fast, so just trying to examine.
Okay. So this Wednesday has gone from when we had four a month to two a month. Now it's on a Wednesday?
Yeah, so when we passed the prior ordinance change and switched to two meetings per month, the council determined that they wanted the public to have more access to the agenda and more time to go through it. So the agendas are now available at the close of business on the Wednesday prior to the council meeting. So that'll give the public a little bit more time to go through the agenda.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So we'll, so yeah, we'll definitely have to examine the responsiveness of council to, to your request and mayor as well. So I think it may be a different approach. Maybe both ends will maybe get you some responses quicker, but definitely, definitely we'll take a look at it.
Just a jot back that says, got it.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I did not receive any email from you, Mr. Dryer, so I will gladly speak with you afterwards and figure out what's going on. You might be spelling my last name wrong. Usually, that's what happens.
It came back to me and said, wasn't able to send it to you.
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's figure out if you have the wrong email address.
C-H-I-O-D-S.
It is not D-S. It is E-S. It looks like chili.
Okay.
Chili's.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bosin?
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to just, just address something Mr. Dryer said, because I truly feel that I do respond to your emails.
Yes, you do.
Okay, so if, so what I, what I'd like to propose is if you have items that you want to pull for the consent agenda, email me. And I'll pull them from, I'll, I'll ask to have them pulled from the consent agenda.
I don't want you always the bad guy, though.
Well, I'm more than happy to accommodate you, sir.
It's not the bad guy. It's just done in the, in the right spirit.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer, I don't think I've ever received an email from you either, and I don't mind being whatever, so if you need something, you can email me or give me a phone call. My phone number is on the website, very public. So if you need anything, just let me know.
I probably have gotten them, so I got to do better.
Yes, you do.
Oh, one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment that I'm, I'm really glad that we are dealing with Title I and putting it to rest, because this has been going on for years. I've never seen one work document that took so long to accomplish. So I want to thank Kelly for all of her hard work and for all of our work sessions that we had going through Title I throughout the years. Thank you.
Is this someone from six years ago?
Yes.
It's like 2016.
That was, I was like, well, we both had just started trying to figure out, trying to put some task force together and change rules and policies that have been in existence since the 50s, 60s?
40s.
40s, so, yeah, great job. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to, that, that Title I, like Councilman Bosin says, has been around for quite a while. And Kelly, I don't know if you forgot to mention it, but at 2:53 today, I received an email from a gentleman who was against this. And some of the things in that email I looked at, and it's just, this was not something that was decided in a recent meeting or anything else. This is something that has been in the works for quite a while. So it's just that email, just when I looked at it, it was like, there's things in there that just didn't make a lot of sense, I guess is the best way to put it.
Remember, remember Councilman Morris, he was at the 60, the 60.
So I just wanted to point that out, Mayor.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. This is, I live council members, being our city council, so, all right. Madam Clerk for the first passing?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, my God. I just can't believe this.
I move to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the second and third times and said, adopt said ordinance.
Second. I got to see this. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
This is my first task force.
It's done. Done, done.
Wow, okay.
Thanks.
Good job. All right, number 15?
Mr. Mayor?
The sirs.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo by amending Chapter Four Plumbing Regulations of Title IX Building Regulations.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number 16, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances, Chapter Five Mechanical Systems of Title IX Building Regulations.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions about this item on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Motion adjourned? Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Forgot to thank the IBEW for their help and their work on the Expo Tower Lights. They volunteered and went in and did all the work to help make that project a reality. So if you get a chance to ride past the expo tonight, the city, city is lit, so thank you. The motion to adjourn has been, motion with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.